And then we can see if we're able to talk about how we found the past few sessions and maybe last weeks in particular. Anyone wants to go first? Maybe if I share my screen and then remind us all what we talked about. So we started to talk about a concept of organized righteousness last week. And I explained how I had come into contact with this concept during, you know, a life-changing retreat I attended a few years ago. When I was forced to confront certain questions in my life, I applied them to my life in a way that I'd never done before. I found the experience to be really, really thorough because apart from my salvation experience, I had not had anything that far-reaching in my life before. It was just really, really incredible. Now, what God did was He used the lives of ordinary people, believers and unbelievers, to challenge me. So many of us, I think, we often, as believers, we only compare ourselves really with other believers. And that probably is one of our biggest problems because we sit in churches sometimes where nobody's doing anything right, where nobody is, you know, nobody's doing anything spectacular, nobody's working in their calling, et cetera, et cetera. So we don't feel like, you know, we stand out and we can just blend in. But I was challenged to look at the lives of unbelievers who were fulfilling the calling of God upon their lives. And to compare them with myself or compare myself to them and the fact that I wasn't working in my calling, it was a rude awakening, a real wake-up call. And I remember when I was heading for the airport, I just, the questions going on in my mind, I'd never faced those questions before. As soon as I arrived, oh, I arrived around midnight, I could not sleep, I sat down and I started writing a manifesto for my life, how I wanted to live my life from that day onwards. And I've never looked back since then. So it was a very, very deep experience and I am grateful to God that that fire that was kindled has not quenched. Now, one of the concepts I became familiar with whilst I was there and subsequently, I think, learned more about is the concept of organized righteousness. The fact that it's not good enough to say, "I love God." "I love God." "Me and my family, we worship God." "We go to church, we pray, we pay our tithes, we are good Christians." And I discovered good compared to whom. You see, when I was first challenged about this, something inside me started rebelling. I was like, "You don't know my life, you don't know the people that I'm good to, you don't know the acts of charity that I perform. So how can you put me in the same bracket as people, other people, who maybe are not very, very helpful or kind to others?" I thought I should not be put in that same category, I thought I should be treated differently. But at that meeting, at that retreat, the Lord brought me off my high horse and showed me that if you think you're doing well, who exactly are you comparing yourself to? Are you comparing yourself to the standard, who is Jesus? Or which is Jesus? Or are you comparing yourself with yourself? Or with people around you that you think maybe are also living mediocre lives? Therefore, you know, you shine like a bright star among them? It was such a rude awakening. I remember that the first couple of days, I literally rebelled, I rebelled, I was, I was not having it. I was not having it because I was self-righteous. I was so confident in my own goodness and I had a rude awakening to understand that compared to the standard that God set for me, that I wasn't even close. And I discovered why I wasn't anywhere close to that standard. It's organized righteousness. You see, when you don't have skill, when you don't have the skills, when you hear about the need to do good works, the only thing that can come to your mind is acts of benevolence. You know, random acts of benevolence, that you rush here, you do this good thing for somebody, you rush there, you do that good thing for another person. And that becomes the standard by which you measure yourself by. But taking me to Genesis, the fact that the retreat took all of us to Genesis, to God's original design, which was based upon "be fruitful, multiply, subdue, and replenish", I discovered that random acts of kindness are just not good enough. Because you see, in the beginning, it wasn't about do-good. It wasn't about do-good occasionally. God said, "Get results, and when you get the results, multiply the results." In other words, their job, the two men, the two people He created, Adam and Eve, they had a job to fill the earth and to fill the earth with the goodness of the Lord through their actions. So the rude awakening I had in Ukraine was this. "Yes, maybe you'll be doing some good work here and there, good works here and there, but are you getting results consistently? Are you able to multiply those results so that more people can benefit from whatever grace God has put on your life?" That's when I discovered, "Aha, now I know what the problem, you don't have the skills." You see, I had been taught the traditional way, which was ministry was either you were out in the street preaching to unbelievers or you were in the church preaching to believers. That's, that was all I knew by ministry. In between these two things, you did a few acts of kindness here and there. You saw somebody in need, you gave them a little bit of money. You saw someone who didn't have food, you gave them some food to eat. That was all good, that was all good. But just what, how narrow that perspective is. When God is thinking about spreading your wings, you're spreading your goodness so that it may reach more people, I was thinking about here and then thinking somehow I was scoring high points. And I discovered the difference is the skills. When I went to Ukraine and I saw young people, people who had only been saved, you know, a few months, sometimes, for a couple of years maximum, doing great works, I discovered there's a problem. "I know more of the Bible than these guys. I can sit them down and teach them and give them sermons, but can I get their results?" And says, "No." So when I discovered that I knew I was in trouble, I knew I had to sit down and start studying. I had to start acquiring new skills, start learning things I hadn't learned before. It's as simple as that. And that took me on a journey of, you know, reading books, watching videos, listening to sermons, reading secular books, many secular books. Because you know what? The skills that God wants us to have in order to be able to fruitful onto the kingdom, many of them are not found in the church. The people of God are so busy being religious, they don't have skills. You literally have to go to the people of the world to learn those skills. You want to build an organization and make it work for the kingdom of God. Very often, you'll find you'll have to go to the people of the world to go and learn skills. Now, you see, the traditional way of the church has been that we don't learn from the people of the world. We go to the world to make money, then we come back to church to give the money to church, then we'll sit down and listen to sermons and then that's it. But God, the Lord opened my eyes that there was a man called Moses. We've all read about him. He used to have face-to-face encounters with God. His first encounter with God was the burning bush experience. I mean, that was really not his first encounter, but the one sort of explicitly recorded. Then Moses, we know, ran away from Egypt, went to the land of Median, stayed there with his father-in-law and, you know, wife for 40 years, came back, let the people out. Moses used to meet with God on the mountain regularly. And yet, it took his father-in-law, a Midianite priest, he was not an Israelite, so he was not a priest appointed by the Lord. He sat Moses down one day and said, "What are you doing? You're going to wear yourself out." And Moses said, "What do you mean by what I'm doing? The people come to me because they want instructions from God. So they come to me and I give them the God's counsel." But the man said, "Yes, that's what you're doing, I can see that's what you're doing, but you're going to wear yourself out, there's only one of you and there are hundreds of thousands of these people. Here's what I'll advise you to do. Select leaders, delegate your work. Let them go out there and resolve matters that aren't so difficult to resolve. And then let only the difficult cases come to you." Now, this man, 4,000 years ago, understood the system that we now apply to our inner judiciary systems. You know, in our judiciary system, we have magistrate courts. We have, like in the UK, we have a Crown Court. Then we have a High Court. Then we have a Supreme Court. If somebody just steals a loaf of bread or slaps somebody on the road or something, it might just go to a magistrate court. If it's more serious, it goes to the Crown Court. If people are not happy with a verdict that they reach at the Crown Court, it goes to High Court. And finally, it might end up with the Supreme Court. This was a system that Jethro taught Moses 4,000 years ago. An unbeliever. The funny thing is, the man said, "I will tell you what to do and God, God will bless it." Guess what? When Moses went before God, the Lord told him exactly the same thing. So Moses came appointed 70 elders. And that's how he set up and lightened the burden on himself. So a judiciary, you know, we've been talking about righteousness, organized righteousness, we're talking about judiciary system. Well, that's a system, a simple system that actually made life so much more, so much easier for Moses. Moses made life easier for himself by listening to Jethro's advice. So what I'm saying is, organized righteousness, the skills required to do God's job, you remember that Moses was doing God's job? But the skills required to do God's job had to come from an unbeliever because the people of God didn't have the skills. So too today, you and I have to step aside the church to get the skills that we need. Because the church has been so spiritual, it has become devoid of ideas. So organized righteousness is about taking principles that God Himself put in place at the beginning. You see, Jethro, what Jethro was telling Moses was nothing unusual, it's already in nature. That whole principle of doing things in a stepwise fashion is already built into nature. Right from creation, God made it such a way that there was a hierarchy of things, there was that feedback systems, there was division, there was communication between units. And we'll talk about all those things later. But the principles were there. And unbelievers, they observed nature. And what did they do? They said, "Pam, we've got a solution." Off they went, without believing in God, just observing God's work, God's handiwork. Gave them the ideas that they needed to be able to solve problems. But you know what we do? We pray, we pray for destiny helpers. I mean, this concept of a destiny helper, I heard about it maybe a couple of years ago. It's so ridiculous and incredibly sad. When a child of God prays, the God will send someone else to come and solve their problem so that they can go to church and give a testimony about how the Lord did something wonderful. It is not befitting of a child of God to believe in like that. We are the light of the world, we have the mandate, we have the mind of Christ. And creation is the work of our Father. It should not be the world that teaches us, it should be us teaching the world. But the sad story is, we haven't been doing our homework, we've been busy being overly religious. And the sad story is, even though we are being more religious, we are not becoming more skilled at the things of God. Our religiosity, our frequenting of church services has not contributed any skill set that we can now enrich the kingdom of God with. On the contrary, we've become so disempowered. So organized righteousness is about rescaling believers to do the work that God has given us to do. Now, I wasn't supposed to start teaching, I was just supposed to be going over what we did last week. And lo and behold, I found myself teaching. Now, I can see quite a few of you have joined. So let me welcome you all and I want to ask if any one of you wants to talk about how you have found, you know, the sessions so far, especially the topic of organized righteousness. Any questions on your mind, any contributions you want to make before we delve deeper? This is your opportunity to do so. Chris, yes, you've joined, Irene, you've joined now, Emanuela, welcome. So does anyone of you want to share something from the past sessions? Or do you want us to carry on and then maybe we do so at the end?
Okay, so we should carry on. I mean, because you started with the point over, it stirred up our thinking, but it would be good if we carry on a bit and then we can ask the questions at the end or as you move on.
Okay, all right. Does everyone agree? Okay, all right, good. So that's what we started talking about. We, there are a couple of ideas that we threw out there. We said, for example, the difference between success and failure is planning. The secret to perpetuating success is staying organized. We said, "The difference between developed nations and the undeveloped is planning and organization. Planning and organization is a precursor and a prerequisite for development." You see, when you take countries like Singapore, they don't have gold, they don't have diamond, they don't have bauxite, they don't have oil. They have very scanty resources. They have what most countries have, that is land, water, trees, plants, maybe a couple of hills. And that's it. I mean, the people of Singapore, as I said, they talk about it, there's not much that they have. And yet, Singapore is one of the richest nations in the world. What's the secret? Order, organization. See, the benefit of order is this. Most business, the most important thing in business is trust. The reason why in developed countries, business is much swifter than in developing countries is trust. I can pick up my phone and call a vendor selling anything in the UK and make a payment over the phone, giving them my card details. And they will not attempt to steal a penny from my account. They will punch in the details I've given them and I'll pay for exactly what I want and it will be delivered at my door, without me having ever met this vendor. And I can do that over and over again. Why? Trust. But trust isn't just a function of human character. Here's the problem that we have in Africa. We are trying to build everything based on human character and characteristics. It's not because the people in Singapore, the people in UK are better people than the people in Africa, but they have created a society based on systems and the rule of law so that it is almost natural to do what is right. They've made doing good an ordinary feature of day-to-day living. And therefore, business flourishes in that environment. You can place an order from Singapore and you know you'll arrive. Singapore attracts business from neighboring countries. For example, they build a shipping port and the neighboring countries bigger than them use their port. Why? Because it's organized. They're not going to make any mistakes, everything will work perfectly. That's their strength. Because they are so organized, their financial system is so organized, their healthcare system is so organized and their biggest asset is organization. It attracts money, people want to come and do business there. Businesses like predictability, they won't pretend to be predictable. It's better to set up a business in a country where you will get 2% profit, but you get it consistently, you know that rain or shine, you are getting your 2%. Than to go set up in a country where one day you might get 100%, the next day you might go bankrupt because there might be coup d'etat or somebody who just woke up and saying, "We have confiscated all assets." Unpredictable environment. Order! Singapore was essentially set up by a dictator. A guy who said, "Look, even if you..." Let me admit somebody, I think I'm gonna make some of you as co-hosts so that you can admit people as they come in. Okay. So because there's so much order in the place, it attracts business because businesses love a predictable environment. You can get your money consistently and it's made that nation wealthy. It's made that nation wealthy. And Ghana can become wealthy. Our riches are not in the gold that we have. There's only so much gold, did you, when I did a bit of research on gold, I was surprised. There's only so much gold you can bring out of the earth in a year. It doesn't matter what technology you have. You can have all the technology you want, there's only so much you can dig in a year. That's why the price of gold is, you know, is where it is. It's because there's scarcity, you just can't bring more than a certain amount out. It is difficult to get the gold out. Ghana's riches doesn't, you know, don't lie in our gold, in our diamond, in our other resources. No, our riches, they're in the people. We just need to learn how to be organized. When I went to Poland, because those of whom of you might not know, I went to, I studied medicine in Poland. When I arrived there, I, I mean, what struck me? This was back then, when, you know, Poland had just, communism had just ended, but you could still see the remnants all over the place. Things didn't look, you know, glamorous, they didn't necessarily look beautiful, but everything worked. My friend and I were going to get a train and we are, you know, we arrived there. The train was, let's say, was supposed to leave at 8 o'clock. And we arrived there, I think, well, as far as we were concerned, it was 8 o'clock because it was showing 8 o'clock on the clock. The train had left and that train left at 8 o'clock. Do you know what happened? As soon as it struck 8 o'clock, from 7:59, 8, bam, took off. We got there at 8 o'clock, maybe 8 o'clock 20 seconds, maybe 8 o'clock 30 seconds, the train was born. Order, order. Because it left on time, someone else waiting for that train at a different station could rely on that train arriving on time. The wealth of nations lies in their ability to be organized. Organization is everything. Look, the human body, each human cell contains something called DNA. DNA is the genetic material responsible for coding all the different features in your body. But when the DNA, a strand of DNA is stretched out, it will cover miles and miles. I've forgotten, the calculation was done, but I've forgotten the details. But we're talking about hundreds of miles of DNA packed into a small cell. What's that organization? To be able to take something long and pack it into a small cell and still make it functional so that that same DNA is able to unwind and then based on, copy itself and then produce proteins and all of that organization. God could have had the DNA, you know, hanging around your body wherever you go, wherever you go. You have DOD hanging around, dragging on the floor. No, order, he packed it into a cell. As you study anatomy, I mean, those of you that have done medical sciences, as you study anatomy, as you study the human body or even the body of animals, you discover the wisdom, but you also discover order. Every cell has a border, every cell has a barrier surrounding it. A cell membrane, plasma membrane. Each cell is like an independent unit and yet the different cells connect with each other, communicate with each other and remain functional. So we are not just talking about having order, but it not working. No, order that works, that's organized righteousness. So that's what God did in creation. And He did all of that so that we might learn. Science is nothing but the study of the natural order of things. That's what science is, you can go and look up the definition. The study of the natural order of things. In other words, you look at what's around you and you wonder, "Wait a minute, why do trees always grow upwards? Why don't they grow sideways?" For example. You start studying it, you'll get your answers. Isaac Newton, who by the way was a Christian, wrote me, you know, Bible commentaries and things like that, but one of the greatest scientists, if not the greatest scientist who will ever live. He understood, the observing nature, you will discover clues that the Creator has hidden. Saw an apple fall and he understood gravity. God has hidden laws within nature. And the idea is that we should observe nature and learn. That's why he says, "Go to the ant and learn, like you lazy man. Go to the ant and study, watch the ant." So there's so much to learn, so much to learn. We talked about how God separated light from darkness, day from the night, the sea from the land, the skies from the earth. He created four seasons. You, excuse me, I thought somebody was saying something. If we go through the whole, the whole of creation, what you discover is separation. You think God came and saw chaos? Bible says, "In the beginning, God created heavens and the earth, but the earth was without form and void." We don't know why the earth was without form and void. It's not yet clear to me, I'm still studying it. But what is noticeable is that God saw the chaos and then He said, "Let there be light," separated light from darkness. He said, "Let the land emerge from the water," separated land. So you see that with God, after He had created the heaven and the earth, it was about organization, it was about setting things in order, creating boundaries. That's what order is about. Living things were created according to their species, different species. Your dog is still a dog, your cat is still a cat. And you'll find that that same order is within the human body. We said, "God created the seasons, winter, spring, summer, autumn, then it goes back to winter." He created natural laws, gravity, friction, all these things to keep life on earth going. One of the fascinating things I discovered about creation was that God made creation, He created the heaven and the earth such that it was a system, self-sustaining system, so that He would not have to wake up in the morning to give you light. You don't have to wake up in the morning to say, "Oh, I wonder what my children are going to eat." No, it's already been sorted. After the flood, God told Noah, "The seed time and harvest time will forever remain on the earth." In other words, He had already put a system in place so that if you are not lazy and you're willing to harvest, you're willing to farm, food will be available. Systems, systems, self-sustaining systems help, they make life easier for everyone. The water cycle, for example. The water cycle, for example, water from the river heats up, evaporates. Good, uh you know, we learnt in, in science, the high, you know, in physics, the higher you go, the cooler it becomes. So the water goes all the way up there and the atmosphere cools and it returns as rain. That cycle begins all over again. So that nothing escapes the earth's surface. Now, one of the things we started to talk about also was Israel. Israel as a nation had a spiritual calling. And that spiritual calling is found in Exodus, chapter nineteen, verses five and six. God said, now therefore, if you will indeed obey my voice and keep my commandment, then you shall be a special treasure to me above all people. For all the earth is mine and you shall be to me a kingdom of priests and a holy nation. This was after Moses had brought the people to Mount Sinai. They were standing at the foot of Mount Sinai when the Lord spoke these words. They were supposed to become a nation of kings and priests. And this, our kingdom of priests, this same concept is found in Titus and is in relation to us, not in Titus, in, in Peter, I think it's first Peter. And it's in relation to us as believers. We are also a kingdom of priests, a holy nation. But then we explained that even though they had a spiritual calling, there were things that needed to be put in place for their spiritual calling to actually materialize. First, they needed to maintain a national identity. They needed to have borders and protect those borders. They needed to have a governance system in place. In other words, the kings, the rulers. They needed craftsmen, the technology guys, the people who make things happen. They needed spiritual leadership. It was with the priests. We explained that without, without the, the craftsmen helping to build walls, without the soldiers fighting the wars, protecting the nation, the priests could not do their jobs. We saw therefore that the craftsmen, the job of the craftsmen was just as important as the job of the priest. What has happened? The churches will become so spiritual. We now don't value these ordinary things. Not every one of us is going to be a preacher. Not every one of us is going to be able to, you know, to, to wow crowds of people with sermons. But we will put infrastructure in place that will make it possible for those who have been called to speak to the people, to be able to do so. That is also the work of God. We, we said that the Puritans, see, the Puritans were British Christians who fled Britain because of persecution and they settled in America, the east coast of the, of America. And what did they do? They just arrived there, built a church, build a few small, small houses and just quietly worship their God. That's not what they did. No, that's not what they did. They built institutions. Harvard University, you've heard about it. The top, top, top so-called Ivy League universities, top universities in, in, in the USA. Built by Christians, build institutions, prisons. They, they created a whole civil society over there that generations after generations have benefited from. That's also the work of God. I told you this story about Zechariah. Now, Zechariah saw a vision in which he saw horns that were scattering Israel. And he said, the Lord showed him four craftsmen. And he asked, Lord, what are these coming to do? Who are these four craftsmen? And the Lord answered him, these are the horns that scattered Judah so that no one could raise their head. But the craftsmen have come to terrify them and throw down these horns of the nations who lifted up their horns against the land of Judah to scatter its people. And I explained how that this passage came alive after I attended, you know, a retreat as a student. Um and I understood the craftsmen refers to men and women with skill. With skill, who know what needs to be done and that it can take different forms. I explained to you how that the, when, when the declaration was made, pardon me, when the declaration was made in nineteen forty-eight, the United Nations made a declaration, they declared Israel to be a new nation. A nation was born in a day, just as the Bible said it would. And when the nation was born, what did the people do? Do they sit down there and pray for a destiny helper, for God to send someone else to come and do it? No, doctors, accountants, teachers, pianists. They rolled up their sleeves. They arrived in the promised land. They became farmers. They became carpenters. They be, they did what they needed to do to build a nation. But they didn't stop there. When they started getting harassed by surrounding nations, do you know what they did? They understood, we need to take our craftsmanship to another level. Just building buildings is not going to be enough. We need ammunition. We need technology to help protect us. And so they did. You see, I talked about Israel having access to nuclear weapon, you know? Most countries' nuclear weapons are known to other countries. Israel keeps it in secret. Nobody knows what they have or what they are capable of. But touch them if you, if you dare, craftsmen, craftsmen. So God said the craftsmen will scare them. Oh, he didn't say the soldiers or the craftsmen. Why? Is the technology that is protecting Israel? It's because people are scared of what Israel may have hidden. That's why they are not touching them. It's not because of the size of their army that people are afraid of them. Other nations have bigger armies. It's the technology. People are scared that these guys have technology that can literally wipe them away. So they're saying, no, we're not touching you. So the concept of organized righteousness is extremely important. It's not something we can ignore. Just as I said to you, coming back from Ukraine, I discovered a big, big, big gap in my knowledge. It wasn't Bible knowledge. It was a lack of skills, lack of skill. I discovered that I didn't even have the skill to preach the word of God as I should. You see, which is an irony because I had been preaching, because I knew how to preach. I'd preached before churches. I've preached, you know, Sunday after Sunday, I've, I've preached. And yet, coming back from Ukraine, I felt like, no, you don't know, you don't even know how to preach. Why? Because I suddenly understood how God wanted his message conveyed to people. And it had nothing to do with what I had been doing before. That's why I changed my approach, like what we are doing right now with this PowerPoint presentation. I never, I didn't used to do that, the word of God from a Pentecostal charismatic background, PowerPoint presentation, that's going to dilute the Holy Spirit's work now. You just flow in the spirit. You shout, you use acronyms, you use, you bamboozle people. Everybody gets worked up at, at the church service. Meet them tomorrow, ask them, what did the preacher talk about? They don't remember. Because it was just an experience. I discovered you need to unlearn any nonsense that you learnt in the past and discover how you can take the words to people's hearts such that they will listen and not forget. That they'll listen and go home and the word will continue to trouble them at home. I have to learn, you need skill. So rounding up what we talked about last week, God's calling upon the church is spiritual. First Peter, chapter two, verse nine talks about us being a royal priesthood. It takes more than spiritual activity to fulfill our calling. It takes, let me go a step further and say it takes more than spiritual gifts to fulfill our calling. You see, that's what I used to think. If you have a gift of prophecy, hallelujah. So how come we are not, in fact, we are not being effective? Or maybe because we don't have enough gift of prophecy around. That's why. No, even if you had all the gifts of prophecy, even if you had all these gifts of tongues, everything, I can assure you, maybe in Africa, you can still bamboozle people. But here in Europe, they'll stare at you like this. Before you know, they've called up a mental health act assessment and you're, you're on your way to hospital. This is not how you could talk to European thinking people. The thinking people, you must get their word of God brought down to the level that they understand. It needs to be a, a message for a thinking person. So simply coming and telling somebody, uh that says the Lord is not going to change. They don't, they don't value those things. That's why people who are using those sort of approaches, yes, they fill their churches. But when you go and look in those churches, they are all Africans or, or, or non-Europeans. Because the Europeans, they are not attracted to that kind of thing. But who are the ones getting results? Alpha course. There's a course here that a, a, an Anglican priest, a born again Anglican priest, set up called Alpha Course. And people sit down, you have a cup of tea, a cup of coffee and sit down. And he will talk to them as I'm talking to you now, maybe do a presentation and give them a message that forces them to think. Not a message that stirs up their emotions and works them into a frenzy. No, a message that it leaves them with something to think about. And it's changing people, gradually changing people. So I discovered you don't have the skills. You need to go and learn skills to be able to talk to certain people because you just don't know how to talk to these people. The church, in order to fulfill its calling, her calling, the church must maintain its identity. Jesus said, have salt within yourself. If the salt loses its savoury, it's good for nothing. Man trample it underfoot. So we must stay relevant. We must, we, we must retain our identity. But we must also be useful. You see, the reason why people like salt is because it brings them benefit. They put it in their food. They use it to preserve fish, meat, vegetables. But you know what? We are the salt of the air. We are the light of the world. The thing about salt and light is that the properties are manifest to all. It does, you don't, you don't need to have a degree in science to know salt when you taste it. You don't need a degree in physics to recognize light when you see it. It, the characteristics, the features are manifest. That's what God says, we're supposed to be light and salt. A city that is standing on a hill cannot be hidden. Our characteristics are supposed to be manifest, but I'm not talking about going out there, making noise, which is how we were taught. No. I'm talking about how the characteristics are manifest. So people look at you and say, there's something about you. I don't quite, can't quite get it, but there's something about you, characteristics. We talked about how, you know, the likes of Joseph and Daniel. For me, these two men, they manifested what salt and light are more than anybody in the Bible. Joseph was imprisoned. He had been imprisoned not through his, uh, fault of his own. In pursuing righteousness, he had ended up in prison. Then what happened? Whilst in prison, he looked and he saw that two of his prison inmates were not looking happy. That's an incredible statement right there. You are in prison, not through any fault of your own, and you have managed to deal with any bitterness that that could have created enough to be able to spot someone else's unhappiness. You realize that when you are engulfed in your own unhappiness, you don't have time to see other people's? Which means Joseph was not carrying any bitterness. He was walking about there freely and then saw somebody who wasn't happy and wondered, why are you not happy? What's going on? And then this guy stole him a dream. He interpreted the dream and that's how this guy, one got, you know, returned to his position in, in the king's palace, the other one died. But that's what opened the door for him. In prison, he was light and salt to somebody. He is the burden on someone else's, even though he himself maybe had a bigger burden. Salt and light. See, the church needs to redefine itself. We need to go back to the drawing board and just say, what exactly is it that God wants us to do? Is it to be more and more religious, sing louder, fast more frequently, pray more, make a lot of noise, go to church every day? The Bible says that when Mary brought, when Jesus was born, Mary brought him to the temple. Maybe Jesus, I'm talking about the eighth day for dedication. And there Simon came out of nowhere and prophesied over him. Another prophetess, the Bible says that she was in the temple praying daily. She also came and prophesied. Now, when we read these stories and we hear about somebody that was in the temple praying daily, you know what? There's something inside of us that say, ah, what a wonderful godly woman. That's how, that's who I aspire to be, like. I don't know about you, but for me, where I was coming from, it was like, yes, these guys, these guys are at the pinnacle of spirituality. That's how I saw it. Until I discovered that Jesus didn't do that. That's a wait a minute. So who am I trying to follow? Am I trying to follow the Son of God? Who came to manifest the very nature of the, the, the very character of the Father and to create, uh to provide for me an example to follow? Is it him that I'm supposed to follow or someone else that impressed me? Not that I'm saying there was anything wrong with one hand, another prophetess was doing. No, I'm saying that's not what our Lord and Savior did. And it is him we are supposed to be following. What did he do? Village to village, from city to city, no rest. Praying the night, in the morning, ready to work. He said, my father is always working and so am I. If you take your time, study, I think it's Matthew, chapter thirteen, the longest day in Jesus's life. Go and sit down and study. Might be thirteen, but somewhere around, around that. Study Jesus's itinerary, how he preached in Galilee. Then took the boat, went to Gadara, then met the, the demoniac of the gathering. Then he lay, came back, he slept on the boat, arrived. Somebody was touching him to, for healing and another person says, come to my house. He was going up and down, up and down, up and down, doing what? Doing the work that his father gave him. He could have gone to the temple and locked himself out there and prayed all night, all day. He could have. But he understood that he was the light of the world, the salt of the earth. And salt must not remain in the salt shaker. The salt that remains in the salt shaker or in the jar or in the container is of no use to anybody. The salt must get out into the dish, into the food and be of benefit. Salt and light, we are the salt of the earth, we are the light of the world, means that we must bring benefit to society. How, how worse as Christians doesn't necessarily always lie in our religiosity. In fact, that's the bit that annoys the people of this world. I don't know if you've seen this movie before, I think it's Schindler's List. This movie was based on what happened in Nazi Germany where, you know, the Germans were, the Nazis were killing Jews left, right and center. And this, this, this Schindler, I think it was a German himself. And there was a rich merchant and he, you know, he discovered, you know, he created a whole scheme whereby he was using his own money to buy Jews so that they wouldn't be sent to the concentration camp to die, buying them so that he might rescue them. Incredible. But in that story, in that movie, you get a chance to watch it. Watch, I don't know, it might be available on YouTube. But there's a scene in that movie. Um no, this is not, I think I'm confusing two movies. There's that movie and I think this one is called The Pianist. But, but no, this one is The Pianist. In The Pianist movie, there is a scene where this guy who's an incredibly talented pianist, when he's running away from the Nazis and he's hiding somewhere in the building terrified because there's a Nazi soldier sniffing around. And you know what? He sits down, he sees a piano and he starts playing. And he starts playing a beautiful melody, an incredibly beautiful melody. And as he plays, this Nazi officer walks in and he listens to this music. And this man that is full of evil, that kills human beings for nothing. And this man that is full of evil, that kills human beings for nothing. By these guys, the play playing of the piano so much so, that even though he would never spare you. He spared this man. Do you know what that mo- that movie scene taught me? He saw value in the man, he said, this one must not die. Because he has something that God has given him, he has developed that talent, he is now blessing people with it. And even though I hate Jews, I must preserve this one. That's what I'm talking about. When you have developed the skills that God gave you, when you've developed the talent that God has given you. Do you know what? You were able to become more of salt and light. Unbelievers don't understand your prophesying and your tongues, but they understand the music. They understand your skills, they understand other things, those things will speak to them. They will see God in those things, even when they can't see him in your religiosity. Don't get me wrong, I'm not saying we stop preaching, I'm not saying that we don't tell them the truth, of course, we're going to tell them the truth. But I'm saying the world is waiting for more than just religion. We must become useful, like the craftsmen in Israel were. The craftsmen in Israel, like that pianist, was to the Nazi soldier. So, one question that kept popping up during the week was, you know, in my mind. And I and I believe in the minds of some people who had been listening the past few weeks was, you know, what 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 do we do? What should our response be? Uh you know, something is being stirred up inside of us. If God is speaking, even if you can't, you know, you've never had a supernatural experience of God speaking to you. You are getting the message, you are sensing that this thing is not just human talk. You're sensing something in your heart that you haven't sensed before. If that's the case, that's God speaking, he doesn't speak in an audible voice, or audible voice like the way I am. What he tends to do majority of the time is he gives you a conviction. Where you wake up in the morning, you know that, you know that, you know that, you know, that this is true. And that you know that, you know that, you know that you can't ignore this or that conviction, that's the voice of God. If you are sensing it, what do you do with it? What do you do with it? There are a few things, a few suggestions that I've compiled here. Let me find the slide. The way to respond, one of the ways to respond is with a prayer, or with a different kind of prayer. You know, I can't tell you the number of times that I have sat in meetings and I have been stirred up. And I have thought, oh God, I can believe, I believe you are speaking to me. And I have prayed and I have forgotten about the whole issue and it's just gone. Now I discovered that I'd been praying the wrong kind of prayer. When the boy Samuel was in the tabernacle at Shiloh. You know Samuel was a boy who, you know, his mother Hannah prayed for a child. And the Lord gave her Samuel and she promised to give Samuel to the Lord, therefore Samuel grew up. At Shiloh with the high priest Eli. Samuel was lying down in the tabernacle one night when he heard Samuel, Samuel. Now he thought it was Eli calling him, so he dashed off to Eli and said, did you call me? Eli said, no, I haven't called you, just go and sleep. So he went and laid down, then he heard again, Samuel, Samuel, so he rushed back. When this thing happened the third time, Eli said, wait a minute, this must be God. Next time you hear this voice, say, speak, Lord, thy servant heareth. So Samuel went and laid down and lo and behold, the voice came at four time and said, and then he said, speak, Lord, for a servant here. And the Lord started to unfold before done, before Samuel. His future and the future of his master Eli. So you kind of ask yourself, why didn't God just speak? Why did he have to call the guy three times and then on, only after the guy had prayed that prayer? It's because God, you know, Jesus used to say, he that had hearing, he that had ears to hear, let him hear. There are two types of hearing, you know? God doesn't want to cast pearls to swine, he doesn't want to just tell you everything when he doesn't. He he can't sense commitment. So the first thing that God wants is a prayer of commitment, commitment, not this, oh Lord, hallelujah. God, I am sensing that you are telling me something that I want to know more about it. I want to understand what direction that you want me to head in, that kind of prayer. And I am committing myself to following whatever it is that you want me to do. That's the first thing. Second, study the problem, study. Now, it may be that you have got something already in mind that you, you think maybe God wants to. Wants you to do, or that you are getting a conviction about something that you need to do. Study the problem, don't rush into trying to find a solution. Take your time to study the problem, let him give you understanding. It's rushing into the, to into uh to into becoming a solution. It's that's what Moses did forty years earlier. That and he ended up killing the Egyptian and he had to run away, study the situation. Then, things we've talked about before, develop a strategy, an action plan, connect with people. Initiate action and finish well. We will talk about such things in more practical terms, you know, in the future. But this is just to say that if you're beginning to sense that God is staring something in you. There is a path to follow, start with praying and being committed to the Lord. Because the Bible says that no man that puts his hand to the platter and looks back is worthy of being. Jesus is not looking for half-committed people, he's not looking for volunteers. Who show up on Monday, but Tuesday they don't. He's looking for people that want to follow him consistently, want to commit to a cause in the way that he is committed to that cause. So pray and commit yourself to whatever the Lord is willing to you. And then become a student of that particular thing and start to search, start to get understanding. I think I'm going to stop here and give you an opportunity to comment or to ask questions. So do you have any questions or any contributions? Ah, you said I should talk first and then you, give you a chance later, I've done my bit, now I'm waiting.
Yes, thank you, thank you so much. Now, um when you read the proverb. Um let me, I have my Bible, proverb six, six to nine.
Proverb six to nine.
Go to the ant, use slugger, consider its weight and be wise. Now, we Christians, I have learnt a lot today. We Christians are more, we're less like, very strong trying. Every way, we we try to think, pray, that God should give us direction, we should do this. But we we forgot that as humans, we were designed to handle manage things. And God has given us wisdom. We we don't need uh another or a third party to come and tell us, look, you have to do this before we do it. We see, see God, God, God sometimes uses the worldly people to speak to us, but we don't see. Look at the scripture, it say go to the ant, the ant is not the pastor, the ant is not a a professor. But consider its weight, look at, look at the ant. So we we need to sit up, we need to arise and just cautiously. Plan our lives and do the things we're supposed to do, we shouldn't wait for someone who say the right time. Or um feel a certain way before we do something. We are, we we are fond of doing that, now we need to feel something when we do something, no, we just have to do it. The Bible says that, plant your seed and that's what I day, afternoon, evening, because you don't know, thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you, that's, that's a very um powerful word, timely intervention. Um yes, there's, there's so much to learn from this, and it's not just about the ants. Um Solomon uses the ant as an example, but literally you can look all through creation. And you will see examples everywhere. You know, the the birds wa- wake up at dawn, you know, they, and 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 they go about their business. You know, they, there's no time for laziness because nobody's going to bring you food, they don't have a welfare system among their animals. If you don't go and look for food, you will die. If you don't go and sort your own, build your own nest, you will freeze. This is the lie, this is the issue with the animal world, but when it comes to humans. Somebody will expect someone else to do something, we are passive. What God wants you to do is to one, take the resources that he's giving you, take the wisdom he's giving you, put it to good use. Solve your problems, use the knowledge to solve other people's problems. People who are less fortunate than yourself, people who are in a more difficult situation, people who are handicapped, people who don't have the. Uh don't have the ability to acquire skills that you are able to acquire. Use that to help them, thank you very much for that, any other contributions?
Okay, I've been very blessed by the the teaching um on orderliness and. Um how orderly God created everything and how he he makes things um the way they are. And sometimes um we we tend to want to um live life. Uh yes, it's chaotic, but we also, instead of putting things in order. Learning when we have to, doing what we have to, to be able to achieve what we need to achieve. Sometimes we just let life be and we just live life as it, I I sometimes say that. What will be will be, you know, that those kind of sayings and we just live life that way. But I've learnt a lot um today and I I believe that we all need to order our lives. And we, as as we commit our ways to God. Uh we need to, well, that's why the Bible doesn't say that we should leave all, I mean. Um we should wait for God to plan for us, it says that you would plan, but ultimately it's God that will. Will let those plans um come to be. So it means that there's some amount of planning that we need to do. And I also um um coming from the fact that God, when God was creating the world, I believe he could have just. Said it and everything would have happened in one day. But look at the count of creation and the fact that he shows you what he creates on this day. And then what he creates the next day, because the things are interdependent on each other. I believe that as we keep growing and as we keep learning different skills. All the skill will come together to um produce that beautiful thing that God has purpose in our hearts or God has purpose our lives for. Thank you very much, and and we are learning a lot, I'm learning a lot, I'm grateful.
Thank you, thank you very much for that as well, I think it's very beautifully summed up, beautifully summed up, thank you, thank you for that. Any more contributions?
Yeah, um good evening. Yeah, um I do, uh thank you so much for pouring into all of us. I- i- it helps to look at life as a Christian from a different perspective. A different perspective in the sense that our understanding of what it takes to even be a Christian. The package of it all unfortunately doesn't allow some of us to think outside the box. Um the way we understand even spirituality. So, everything you teach and pouring out, courses want to look at life. From a different perspective and question it. Our understanding of someone who is even spiritual i- is questionable. So, thank you for all you pouring. Um I believe just as much as our other participants have said. We are all learning, we align our lives to what is expected of us as Christians, as believers. And whether we even understand what it is in the first place. So there there is a lot of relearning going on. Um some of us when we quiet, um i- is because you need to let it sink, you know? To try to understand it and trust God to help us or to come to that level whereby. It's intense for each one of us will come to pass. So, thank you for all you've been doing, um there are a lot of questions will come, but we need to. Get the grasp of all that it takes for it. And then hopefully as we keep learning and relearning, I mean, some of the questions are being answered along the way. So, thank you and um continue to enrich all of us, amen.
Amen, amen, thank you very much, Rachel, for that contribution, that's, that's very helpful. I think for, for me, it's um that that reengineering that you were talking about. Where you you sit back and redefine Christianity, that's what I, that's what I had to do. I had to do because I just realized, wait a minute, you've been doing this thing for thirty years, what are, what are the results? Where are the results? You know, if you, if you, if you go to university and you study a one subject. Continuously for thirty years, you become a professor, you become a world renowned professor, that's what you become. So if you've been studying this thing for thirty years, been doing this thing, that you're living it for thirty years, one book. And what do you have to show for it? That's what, it rocked my foundations. I thought there's something, something not not right here, there's something not right here. Because even if, you know, you don't have to know the whole Bible to be effective. Even if you know a little bit, but you know it the right way, you'll be effective. That means there's something fundamentally wrong, there was something fundamentally wrong in the way and with the way I understood God. And he took, he took that rude awakening, make me, somebody confronting me, say, look. Let's say that you on Judgment Day, you are standing here. And Mother Teresa is standing here, she obviously was a Catholic. She don't know her theology, whether her theology was right in place, whether she knew Jesus the way you and I know Jesus. But you can go to Calcutta right now and see her legacy. And see what she left to be found. Jesus said, I was hungry and you fed me. I was thirsty, he gave me to drink, now enter into the room of my father. So, Jesus has to choose between that woman that saved so many lives. And you with your perfect theology, who should he choose? The God that is righteous, who should he choose? That was a difficult question to answer, because you see, we, salvation is by grace, through faith. Not of our own works, hallelujah, some of us have come to don that thing. As a, as, as a, you know, as an adornment. I'm saved by grace, which means I don't have to do anything, which means I can, beneath that cloak of righteousness. I can be as evil as anything, not help anybody, be as mean as a snake, but you know what? I'm saved, I go to the right church, I have the right doctrine, I have the right Christian lingo. The God of righteousness will take somebody that sacrificed their lives, such a leper. Some of us will not even enter the same room with the leper, such a leper, because the lepers needed love. A man, a man that was collected from a a a waste, uh water pipe or some. He was collected from that, this man was on his last legs. Do you know what that man needed the most? It wasn't food, it was a hug. When he was hugged, he said, now I am ready to die, I can die as a human being. Now imagine someone who did that. Jesus, the son of righteousness, stands in front of that man. And he says, no, you are going to hell because you did not believe in my name. I was shaken, he said, I am the way, the truth and the life. Do you know what the way is? Christianity was described as the way, but it's also the truth. There are people who don't have the theology, but they've encountered the person. They don't know him, the Bible says he was in the world by his, that his own did not know him. He, he is the light, Jesus is the light, first John, that lighted every man. Not every, not every Christian, no, every man, he is the light. On that day, there will be surprises, they will be surprised, people will be crying, they say, wait, but I went to church, I was casting a demon. Say, what demon, I don't, I don't know who you are talking about, who are you, what's your name? There will be shocks on that day, because we have turned everything into religiosity. So much so that we've lost compassion. Because what would need compassion when grace is what's going to take me to heaven? Why do I even need to be kind? Grace is what's taking me to heaven. This was what led the Pharisees to become so wicked that they killed the son of God. And went home and ate their dinners, no problem. On Saturday, they were in the temple worshipping. The man, a a a woman told a story, this happened in Pakistan, she was shaken. A man killed a Jew, they get, the guy had done nothing wrong, he just found out that he was a Jew. And he killed him. And when he finished, he rolled out his mat and he prayed to his God. You know, we look at something like that and we think, oh, this religion, this Islam. No, 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 no. It's no Islam, oh, it's religion that does this to people. The Pharisees did exactly the same thing. They killed the son of God. Saul, before he became Paul, he stood there. The young man that stone Stephen to death. Before they did, they took off their clothes so that the blood and the flesh scattering from would not stain their clothes. They put their clothes at the feet of Saul. A Pharisee, a religious man, was the one to kill and come back. That's what religion can do to you. It doesn't matter what kind of religion. Buddhist religion, Islamic religion, Christian religion, religion will turn you into a situation where a, a kind of person who can swallow camels but chokes at a nut. That's what religion can do to you. As soon as the church building is open, you are there. You know the Bible from head to toe. But when the son of God stands in front of you, he will look at you and say, who is this person? I don't recognize him. He doesn't have the fragrance of the Lord. Thank you very much. I think we have room for maybe one more contribution, one or two more contributions before we go.
Yeah, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Okay, um, from all that I've been hearing today, I think that, um, we have a lot to unlearn and relearn. Um, yeah. You know, we've been so religious, like you're saying, and we are not. You know, it's like, everything is spiritual, spiritual life. Even, um, our purpose, finding our purpose, we think that it should be in church. Everything is in church, everything is in church. I mean, it should, if you, I, I was thinking like that before. Until recently, and during this Bible study, I realized that that a lot of things I have to unlearn and relearn. Otherwise, I will not make any headway. So, I am learning a lot and I'm ready to unlearn certain things. Because even the people we call, I mean, the worldly people. There are certain things they can also do and they will get resolved. As long as if, if they plant and it rains, if they put acid, it will germinate for sure. If I do thin, it will germinate. But we are always like, we were taught basically that everything about fulfilling God's plan should be centered around the church. You know, in the church and we are always, me, I've been always thinking that I should do something that will be in church, you know, my purpose should be in church and not outside it. By now that I've been taught that, well, it can be anywhere. Not necessarily in church, that can find my purpose outside of church. And then it will be very fulfilling. I am ready to unlearn a lot of things. And then relearn, unlearn, relearn, and then I know that eventually by the time this Bible study gets, comes to a close, I would have learned a lot and my, I'll be able to fulfill my purpose. God bless you so much.
Praise God, praise God for that, that praise God. That's really, that really blesses me hearing that, you know, um. Yeah, I think a lot of people will be able to echo what you, what you said, you know? Um, the idea that your calling is, is in the church. It frustrated so many people. But a church as a platform is incredibly limited. How many people can find their calling in a church? How many ushers department can we have? How many hospitality departments can we have? You know, and as the church grows bigger and bigger, it becomes even more obvious that the vast majority, ninety percent, ninety-five percent will have to just sit and listen again and again and again and again and not grow and not fulfill their purpose. So I understand exactly what you're saying. God bless you. Good, one more before we finish. Any take us, any contributions or questions?
Hello, yes. For me, I think it's both, uh, maybe a contribution and a question. Which may be another time you can address.
Okay.
I think on, on, in, like, on this platform, I have learnt so much. For me, the word glory, we see it in church, especially charismatic church. And I don't think I quite understood the word till you explained what, how glory is not like a certain strange presence that we want to feel or see. And that the glory God seeks is the one that people look at our lives. And, and, and give him glory because of our lives. So I think that another word that we hear a lot in this age of Christianity is prophetic. Everything is prophetic prayers, prophetic something. And that, that concept of that word, I don't know who coined it. And I don't think many of us understand, but in, in Ghana particularly. Many things that you see, they, they target us maybe prophetically. So maybe when in our next session, you could explain that word for us to understand it better. And when you were teaching, you said something that I took note of. You talked about Moses where his father-in-law advised him to select, um, the seventy men. It's, it was interesting to me, eh, because Moses had encountered God. I mean, if we say burning bush experience, he had, he had encountered God, he had heard from God several. But when it came to like a problem or how he should organize his ministry. God didn't give him every instruction. He gave him instructions at certain point, but asking his organization, he didn't tell him directly. He took his father-in-law to tell him, for him to go back to God to confirm. And I think it's opened my eyes to the fact that sometimes in between we taking steps or sometimes when God leads people or our, our environment to let us know what to do, we still feel that we must hear a certain audible voice before it will be authentic. But sometimes God rather wants to confirm, be the second voice, rather than be the first voice. And sometimes that is where we miss it. We think that, oh, because it came from, um, a colleague. It didn't come from a spiritual father or, or you just know within you that you should do this. Because you think that you didn't feel a certain, eh, powerful person or the audible voice of God. It's not what God is instructing you to do. So I think it's, you, you've, you, you've opened our eyes to a lot of things. And many times, that is what holds us back because there, for me, many times I had want, like, I wanted to take certain decisions and I'm so unsure, is it really what God is saying? You feel within you, that's what you have to do, but you always want to hear a certain voice or dream and see something before you know it's God. Thank you so much. God bless you.
Thank you too. God bless you. I mean, yeah, when we have time, we can look at that, you know, all these prophetic utterances and all these buzzwords that people throw around here and, uh, 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 some of it is just marketing ploy, to be, to be perfectly honest with you. It is because people in Ghana, you know, when you use that word, i- i- it stares up, it conjures up something in their imaginations and it is easier to then draw people, you know? You can big yourself up by saying something completely nonsense and tying it with a prophetic. Then it authenticates, it suddenly becomes a word of God. But it's like people just, they don't, and they don't know what they are talking about. You know, as children of God, we should not even be, it shouldn't even be something that we bother ourselves with. You know, somebody says, look, when we have time, we'll go into this, but I'll just leave you with these words. All the apostle was in, um, eh, in Mylites. He told them, the, the, the believers, he assembled all the leaders from Ephesus and he told them that he, he is going to Jerusalem because God has, you know, he, he's bound in spirit to go to Jerusalem. And that he knows that everywhere he's going to be going, wo- troubles will befalling him. But those things don't bother him, he's just going to go. When he went somewhere else, I've forgotten where it was, or that, uh, Antioch or somewhere else. Haggabus, a prophet of God, who had prophesied a drought in Jerusalem. And the drought had come true. This was not a fake prophet, oh, real prophet of God. He came. Took Paul's belt, he bound his own hands and said, that says the Lord. So shall they do to the man who owns this belt? Then all the believers fell on, Paul, Paul, don't go to Jerusalem, they're going to arrest you, they'll do this to you. Paul looked at them and he said, why are you guys, uh, worrying me with all your tears and, uh, things like that? Don't you know that God has already told me that wherever I go, there's going to be trouble befalling me? So this prophecy of they're going to bind me, is it different from what God told me long ago? You see, Paul was not moved by prophecy. Then your, the, the, the Bible says that you shall all be taught by God. In other words, you will receive a word from him in your heart and you will know in your heart of hearts whether something be true or false. So, a child of God is not supposed to be led by some prophetic word. It can mislead you. If in the Old Testament days, it used to happen. If, eh, 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 if a lying prophet will come to somebody and the person will start saying somebody, it's something else and everybody be going, yes. No, a child of God is not going to be listening to prophecy here and there. You're looking for prophecy, open your Bible. All the words that God spoke, prophetic words, they are written there. You don't need any other prophetic word from anybody. He opens the door, the door for the devil to come in. He can tell you anything that's prophetic and then you be following it. Don't follow anybody's prophetic word. I can say that emphatically, don't follow anybody's prophetic word. If God wants to get, guide you, he will find a way to guide you. He will, he said, I will guide you with my eye. He will find a way to guide you. Don't, because that's how you go astray. I don't follow prophecy, prophecy from anybody. I don't care who they are. If you give me a prophetic word, fine, I receive it as for, for, for your, for, uh, you know, the way you say for your information. I put it down somewhere and I carry on with the path that the Lord has shown me. If whilst I'm on that path, there is confirmation, then I can say, okay. This guy, what he was saying was true, but I wasn't following his word. I was following the word that was written in my heart. That's how his prophecy is supposed to conform, coming from somebody at best is supposed to confirm what the Lord has already revealed to you. And if it's contrary to what the Lord has revealed to you, you don't even bother with it. Thank you all very much. God bless you and we'll meet by God's grace, ha, um, next week. Have a lovely Easter weekend.
Yeah, have a lovely Easter weekend. You too. Thank you.